City Council meeting, this is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, July twenty six, two thousand and twenty-two. We're having technical issues, one moment. Thank you, Rich. And can we expand the video so that I can see all, so that we can see all the participants? Two, five. The, the pain. The. Uh, it's the, it's the vertical bar in the, there you go. That's perfect, thank you. We can, I can, we can handle the participants later, that's fine. Okay, just a minute when you're ready. Okay, and we're not echoing anymore, so that's good. All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting, this is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, July twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two. The time right now is seven oh one P M. Uh, I'm gonna ask our clerk to please call the rule. Right. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Fulcher, Kenny, Hanford, Davis, Gamble, and Scarborough. Please note for the record that Councilmember Hanford is attending virtually.
Thank you, and we did hear from Councilmember Fisher at an earlier meeting that he would not be here this evening. So unless there's objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. Seeing no objection, we'll go ahead and move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Hanford, you're gonna be leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, the first item, we have a couple of proclamations this evening. The first proclamation that I'm gonna read into the record is for National Night Out, and go ahead and read that in. Recognizing August second, two thousand and twenty-two as National Night Out, whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, better places to live, and whereas the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in Monroe to join more than thirty-eight million neighbors across approximately sixteen thousand communities from all fifty states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide, and whereas the National Association of Town Watch first introduced National Night Out in August nineteen eighty-four, and whereas Imagine Monroe states in part, "Friendly and responsive, we strengthen connections through gathering spaces, events, services, and community-centered infrastructure, creating a safe place for all. In Monroe, everyone feels at home and everyone feels they belong, and whereas the National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community and provides an opportunity to bring police officers and neighbors together under positive circumstances. And whereas the National Night Out within the city of Monroe includes the participation of scores of organizations that support people in need, provide recreational and other opportunities for our youth, and enhance the quality of life and businesses in our community. Now therefore, I Jeffrey Thomas, Monroe City of Monroe, recognize and proclaim August second, two thousand and twenty-two as National Night Out, and I encourage residents, employers, visitors to participate in the Monroe Rotary's National Night Out event sponsored by numerous non- and for-profits in Monroe at Lake Ty Park on August two, two thousand and twenty-two, at five thirty P M until eight thirty P M, and to learn more about our community, public safety, police, and youth programs, and to thank them for their work in supporting and enhancing our community. Thank you. The other one that I have to read in this evening is a new one for our community. Last year, we declared the city of Monroe a Purple Heart City. Um, I don't know if I have anybody here to receive this this evening, uh, no, I do not, and, um, so I'll go ahead and I'll read this in. Recognizing August seven, two thousand and twenty-two as Purple Heart Day. Whereas on August seven, seventeen eighty-two, George Washington established the Badge of Military Merit, which was the, uh, which was the first medal authorized for enlisted soldiers in the Continental Army to recognize a singularly meritorious action by a soldier, and whereas on February twenty-two, nineteen thirty-two, U.S. Army Chief of Staff Douglas MacArthur established the Purple Heart Award in the spirit of the Badge of Military Merit in honor of George Washington's bicentennial birthday and authorized the award for soldiers in the United States Army for soldiers who are wounded or lose their lives in military action. And August seventh is annually recognized as Purple Heart Day. And whereas in nineteen forty-two, President Franklin Roosevelt expanded the Purple Heart Award to other branches of the United States Military by authorizing the Navy, the Navy Department to award the Purple Heart to personnel wounded or killed in action, beginning with the attack on Pearl Harbor on December seventh, nineteen forty-one, and today, the Purple Heart is authorized for people serving in all branches of the United States Military who are wounded or lose their lives in military actions, and whereas following the attack at Pearl Harbor until the day she passed away, Eleanor Roosevelt carried in her wallet a piece of paper with the following written upon it. Dear Lord, lest I continue in my complacent ways, help me to remember that someone, some out, that somewhere someone died for me today, and if there be war, help me to remember and to ask, am I worth dying for, and in our daily walk, we should always remember those serving and their families and honor their service and their sacrifices in our words, hearts, and actions. Whereas the Ward Roney, um, Junior Veterans of Foreign Wars Post seventeen eleven, which represents and advocates for veterans in the community of Monroe, requested the city of Monroe declare itself a Purple Heart City. And on December seven, two thousand and twenty-one, Monroe Mayor and City Council jointly issued a proclamation declaring the city of Monroe as Purple Heart City, and since two thousand and fourteen, uh, August seventh has been a day to honor and remember people wounded and who have lost their lives in action and in service to our community, and whereas the flying of the Purple Heart flag on the city of Monroe's municipal campus symbolizes remembering and honoring Purple Heart Award recipients. Now therefore, I Jeffrey Thomas, Mayor of the city of Monroe, Washington, do hereby recognize and proclaim August seven, two thousand and twenty-two as Purple Heart Day and authorize and direct the flying of the Purple Heart flag at the city Monroe's municipal campus from August five, two thousand and twenty-two to August twelve, two thousand and twenty-two, and encourage residents, employers, and visitors to commit ourselves and our community to remembering and honoring recipients of the Purple Heart Award in our words, hearts, and actions. So, thank you very much, everybody. I, uh, we will be honoring the Purple Heart recipients on August fifth at five P M, uh, that's a Friday, and, um, we will notice that as a potential quorum, uh, so that if councilmembers would like to attend, I'm sure that the VFW attendees would appreciate your attendance as well. Thank you, everybody. Okay, um, next item on the agenda then is public comments, there's a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city Monroe, except any quasi-judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker, if you'd like to speak this evening, and you are remote, uh, please hit the raise hand function in your Zoom, um, screen, or if you're here in person, just go ahead and raise your hand if you'd like to come forward to speak. Okay, uh, come on forward, and, um, we will set the timer for three minutes, please go ahead and state your name and area of residence will be acceptable for the record, and then we'll start the three minutes.
South Madison Street. That's. Issue of the public fireworks displays, uh, in our local city. I have been a, me and my wife and my family have been a resident of Monroe for the, since two thousand and eighteen, I have two kids who have been born in this city, and, um, right now, we cannot think of living anywhere else other than Monroe. Um, and one of the things that makes it a great place is the fact that we are one of the few jurisdictions still in, uh, King and Snohomish Counties that allow fireworks displays. Um, even with the, uh, the professional displays, those are dying breed, and, um, unfortunately, those are harder to come by. We love to go outside and light off our legal and safe fireworks. You know, we do it in a safe manner, and many in our neighborhood do the same. Um, while I know there are those out there who, uh, like to indulge and do, undo it in an unsafe manner, those are far and few between. And so I'm here to ask that, you know, that, uh, the ability to allow the private citizen to maintain the use of fireworks on the Fourth of July between, during the set hours for the, the some, set forth by the city council to be allowed to continue for the coming years. I know there are those out there who, you know, have family members who are suffering from PTSD and animals who have issues, and for them, I feel, and I apologize, but, um, my, you know, from experience, my mother has a dog who, uh, was saved from a reservation after the Fourth of July, after some kids decided to put a firework on her rear hind legs and light it. Um, she is terrified of fireworks, but my mother still believes in the, our right to launch our fireworks on the Fourth of July, as long as it's done in a safe manner. That was not an unsafe manner, but she has taken the ability to take care of her animal and to put it into a position every Fourth of July to where the stress on the animal is much less, those seems, the same things can be done to, with other local citizens here. If there's an issue, there are things that they can do to be able to, um, protect their animals, to be able to calm their animals. Can't say it's gonna be perfect in every situation, but coming out, you know, I do feel for them, as we do have an animal who suffers through that every year. But, as such, you know, I still believe that it is our God-given right to be able to launch our fireworks in a safe manner, as long as we, you know, we are doing it in a, you know, a safe manner, and so I ask that, uh, the council allows us to maintain that ability for the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, you also would like to speak that's on the attendees list, please go ahead and raise your hand. All right, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay. Uh, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, and I turn to our council. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I make a move to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Scarborough, a second from Councilmember Kenny. Any discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda? There being none, we'll move to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, motion passes five zero, please let the record show that, uh, Councilmember, um, Gamble was, uh, out of the room at the time of the vote. Uh, next item on the agenda is new business, uh, the first item is, uh, new business item seven point one, confirm appointments, planning commission position two and position seven, and I show that, uh, Jody Wykoff has this, so. Okay, go ahead. Oh, yes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight before you, we have two appointments, uh, that the mayor is asking for confirmation for, um, for planning commission. We had two recent vacancies, um, and, uh, have been continuing to advertise for vacancies on all of our boards and commissions. We had two applicants for planning commission, the mayor and staff interviewed both applicants, and the mayor is asking for confirmation for Janelle Lewis to position seven, uh, expiring two thousand and twenty-three, and Kelsey Dawkins to position two, expiring two thousand and twenty-two.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, councilmembers, do you have any questions or a motion? Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Janelle Lewis to the planning commission position seven, a vacant seat with a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
I have a motion, remember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Davis, uh, for the request, for the first requested, uh, motion for consideration in the agenda bill. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll move to vote, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Councilmember Hanford, I did not see your, uh, your hand go up. Go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
That's okay. So, like usual, I just wanted to know if any other councilmembers have anything as far as your personal experience with these individuals that we're looking to confirm tonight. I'd love to get your feedback, I know that I've spoken with Janelle Lewis a few times. And I do not know the other lady's name, or I do not know her, but I've read her application looks great. So I'd love to hear from any other councilmembers, if you have anything else to share, thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Um, I do have, Kelsey Dawkins is in the audience, and, uh, councilmembers, if you'd like, I can certainly bring Kelsey, uh, forward for her to introduce herself, is that something the council would like?
Sure, that'd be great.
All right, uh, we'll go ahead and bring Kelsey forward to the panelists. Councilmember Kenny, I saw that your, um, your microphone went on, did you have a question?
With Ms. Lewis, so I was just going to offer that at this point, but that can be done after we hear from, um, Ms. Dawkins.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Kelsey, um, maybe just go ahead and, uh, say a few words about your interest in serving on the planning commission so that the uh, council can hear a little bit about you and your interest. Kelsey, um, you're on mute.
That's a great start. Um, hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great, I'm, I'm Kelsey Dawkins, I moved to Monroe about two years ago, bought a house on Powell Street. Um, I really felt welcomed in this community, I moved here right before the pandemic, and, um, I feel like it's my time to start giving back to the community. I'm a real estate agent, I've been a real estate agent for six years, so I'm not fully versed on codes, but I'm not completely foreign to it, and, um, I know a lot, uh, I get a lot of, um, conversation about how much people love Monroe, whether they live here or whether there are people that are, um, coming into the community, and so I feel like I get a well-rounded, um, outlook on what our community needs and wants, um, and I'm just excited to serve, um, to the community, this place has been amazing to me, and I'd like to give back.
All right, thank you very much, Kelsey. Councilmembers, are there any other questions, or is a motion on the floor to approve, um, Janelle Lewis? Yeah, any other discussion on the motion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, seeing none, we'll move to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes five zero, again, please let the record show that Councilmember Gamble was not in the room during the, uh, vote. And then there's a second motion for council's consideration. Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
Yes, I'll move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Kelsey Dawkins to the planning commission position two, a vacant seat with a term ending twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
I have a motion from Councilmember Davis, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for motion number two to confirm the appointment of Kelsey Dawkins to the planning commission position two. Any discussion on the motion? All right, there being none, we'll move to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes five zero, uh, again with Councilmember Gamble not in the room at the time of the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kelsey, thank you very much, and congratulations. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item would be, um, item seven point two, this is agreement with the city of Sultan and Volunteers of America for Mobile Mental Health Services with Deborah Knight. So Deborah, go ahead.
That, thank you, Mayor, so the issue in front of the council, as the mayor stated, was or is to sign an agreement for services with the city of Sultan and Volunteers of America, Western Washington for Mobile Mental Health Services. Uh, the agreement is partially funded through a grant for sixty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars with Snohomish County. The total project cost is a hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred. The cities of Sultan and Monroe will each pay thirty thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, staff are recommending that the city's portion be funded through our distribution of American Rescue Plan Act funding. Volunteers of America, Western Washington, will provide the mental health clinician to assist police and fire with responding to individuals experiencing acute mental health crisis. The goal is to reduce response times for mental health crisis from hours to minutes. Calls will be dispatched through nine one one or the new nine eight eight number. Sultan will be the fiscal agent. Our Attorneys Act LEL is recommending that the motion be amended slightly because the city of Sultan's city council will not be reviewing this agreement until Thursday, so just adding on at the end of the motion together with such minor revisions as the mayor deems necessary and appropriate. This will avoid having to bring the agreement back to city council if there's a minor amendment made.
All right, thank you very much, Deborah. Uh, Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, yes, can you repeat that, Deborah, what needs to be added to the motion?
Sure, and this is the, this is the standard of language that we see in many of the contracts that come forward, and so it would be together with such minor revisions as the mayor deems necessary and appropriate.
Okay, I, I think this is a great idea, uh, I love this. So I will move to, I move to approve the recommendation of the twenty twenty-two Human Services Award Review Committee. Am I in the wrong one here?
You are.
It's up on the.
I thought I clicked on the right one. Oh my goodness, there it is. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for services with the city of Sultan and Volunteers of America, Western Washington for Mobile Mental Health Services together with such minor revisions as the mayor seems necessary, deems necessary or appropriate.
They have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Gamble, for the requested action as revised, um, and is now, uh, showing on the screen, any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, we'll move to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes six zero, uh, please let the record indicate that Councilmember Gamble entered the room about seven twenty. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item, and that is item seven point three, resolution number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero one three, extending the term of the Economic Development Advisory Board with Mr. Heebner. Mr. Heebner, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, good evening, sir, good evening, councilmembers. Uh, as you'll remember, council, in your joint meeting with the Economic Development Advisory Board, uh, last week, one of the recommendations that the board, uh, put forward to you, uh, was to extend the term of the Economic Development Advisory Board, which was initially to end at the conclusion of this calendar year. Uh, with quick background, the, uh, Economic Development Advisory Board was established by the city through council's passage of resolution number zero one nine, two thousand and eighteen as a, uh, a short-term, uh, advisory board, and so, again, with their recommendation, we're bringing forward to your consideration extending that term for an additional four-year term. Uh, resolution number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero one three, uh, would enact that recommendation. The resolution was, uh, prepared in consultation with city attorney LEL, and what, uh, passage of the resolution would do would be to repeal and replace in its entirety, uh, that original resolution from two thousand and eighteen. Uh, however, the terms of the resolution are, uh, substantially similar to what was previously passed, just updated to reflect the extension of the board as a, a currently existing, uh, a currently existing body. So the term would be extended for, as I mentioned, a four-year term, um, you, ending on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, as required by, uh, the original resolution. Prior to the end of that time period, the organization and effectiveness of the board shall be, uh, evaluated uh, by the city council and may be reconvened for a longer term by council action. Uh, the membership section of the resolution has been, uh, updated just to reflect, again, those board members that are, um, have been currently appointed and confirmed, that they would continue in their seats for the terms that they were originally uh, appointed, and also addresses that if there becomes a vacancy in one of those positions, that the member that is so appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council would be appointed to complete the, the remaining duration of the unexpired term. Uh, composition of the board, regular meetings, uh, board responsibilities, staffing and authority all remain substantially similar to the terms from the resolution that, uh, this updated document would replace. Uh, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my, uh, presentation on this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions from council.
All right, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Heebner, thank you very much, Rich. I'm gonna go ahead and move to Councilmember Gamble, Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yo, appreciate you bringing this forward, and, you know, we had our joint session with EDAB, and I appreciate all of the, uh, the insight that they provide, I love that we have a diversified, you know, view and participants on that board, and so I'm gonna move to approve resolution number two thousand and twenty-two, oh one three, resolution of the city council of the city of Monroe, Washington, repealing resolution number zero one nine, two thousand and eighteen, establishing updated standards and procedures for the Economic Development Advisory Board, EDAB, and extending the EDAB for an additional four-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
I have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, a second from Councilmember Kenny for the requested action as shown in new business item seven point three as, uh, displayed on the screen, any discussion on the motion? There being none, uh, we'll move to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes six zero, thank you, everybody. All right, councilmember reports, we'll go ahead and start on the end, Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Nothing to report this week.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Fisher, as noted before, is out this evening, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, nothing to report this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kenny.
Midi meeting this evening and, uh, received an update on the capital facilities plan and transportation utility comp plan from Mr. Jacob Roberts, and, uh, Councilmember Davis and I were in attendance for that, so it was great, that's it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Fulcher, go ahead.
Um, on Thursday, we had our, um, new state reps at a local coffee shop, it actually was very well attended, really good time, getting a lot of participation with the people, being, uh, question and answer time, getting to know the new guys, and I appreciate their time and, um, look forward to working with them.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Fulcher, Councilmember Davis.
I'm enjoying the, uh, the fans and the air conditioner. But, other than that, nothing to report.
Thank you, Ed, Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you, everybody, uh, we're gonna go ahead and move to the Finance Department, June two thousand and twenty-two report, uh, with Greg Philand, Greg, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. Uh, so today, we have the packet, uh, in the packet is the June finance report itself. Um, a couple of things to just highlight for you is the interest rate itself, so as we've been watching what the FOMC has been doing with short-term interest rates, that is having an impact on the LGIP, which is a short-term interest, um, vessel that we use for money to have quick access to it. And so the first time that the daily interest yield has been above one percent happened in June of this year, so it was back to April of two thousand and twenty, um, when the interest rate was still back above one percent, so we saw those interest rates go down dramatically, and now they're starting to come back up, which is good for our short-term interest, and will also be good for our long-term interest, but definitely want to continue watching, and we just, as you can see in your package, just reinvested some additional funds into the short-term interest rate itself, or the short-term interest vessel. The other thing is to update you on the budget process itself, so all the departments are working very hard right now on the budgets. We're working on finishing up the forecast for the end of two thousand and twenty-two, and also working for the biennial budget process for twenty-three and twenty-four. Those are due at the end of July, and then we'll start meeting with the mayor and with Ms. Knight on, starting on August fourth, to start talking about the biennial budget process. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Greg. Um, councilmembers, any questions for, for finance? All right, seeing none, we'll move, go ahead and move on to the. Oh. It's because you're right next to mine. Okay, uh, go ahead.
Yo, appreciate the report, and if I, if I read correctly, too, we're about, well, close to six hundred thousand dollars ahead. Don't appreciate the report. If I, if I read correctly, too, we're about well, close to six hundred thousand dollars ahead or ahead of revenues target without considering ARPA in any of those funds. Is that correct?
I believe so. I'd have to go back and double check and look, but most of the categories that we're looking at are ahead of what the forecast has been. And I think part of that was too, is that it was a conservative estimate going into twenty twenty two, not knowing what that was going to hold with the pandemic. But we are seeing a lot of the categories recover quite well.
I just funny it out because as we, we dig in on the, on the finance committee, we're looking through the budgeting process. It's just the finance team has done a great job of putting us in a very good position in these uncertain times. And I just, it's always great to see. You know, we're not, that we're in the black and not using ARPA funds in order to accomplish that. So just good job. Just keep it that way.
All right. Thank you very much, council member gamble. Anything, any other questions for Greg? I'll try not to put my thumb in front of your microphone on my screen here. All right. Going to go ahead and move on to the community development report and this will be with Lance Bailey. Lance, go ahead.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I, and I just wanted to give a couple of highlights out of the, out of the report from community development. First off, our plans examiner Ted Corey just recently passed his commercial building inspector certification through the International Code Council and want to give a congratulations and a shout out to him. This is a a three and a half hour, eighty question test to, in order to get that certification. So Ted is now, is now got that under his belt. And also one and two, as you can see in regards to code enforcement, we're still continuing to get a number of cases that are coming in on a monthly basis. And as council knows, we, we're currently without a full time code enforcement officer. We're in the process of recruiting for that position and we will be doing some second interviews coming up soon. So we're, we're optimistic that we'll, we'll get a successful candidate out of these second round, second round interviews and get somebody on, on board full time. Also wanted to give a, an update on the comprehensive plan. We did a kickoff meeting with the consultants last week. It was an internal meeting that was attended by a number of different staff from different departments that will be working on various elements of the comprehensive plan. The mayor was also in attendance, in, in attendance for that meeting. So just to keep a heads up that we will be revising the schedule for certain tasks and milestones. And probably the first one that we will see for, for a city council is we'll be putting together a public participation plan that will come to council for your approval. And I expect that that will be sometime in, in early September, if not late August, that will be coming to council with that. And with that, that concludes my report unless anyone has any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Lance. There any questions for Mr. Bailey? I'm being really careful looking at both screens. Okay, I seen none. Thank you very much, Lance. All right. Next up is nine point three. This is human resources, IT department report with Tyler Christian. So Tyler, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. As it seems to be normal, we continue to hire people. As Mr. Bailey said, we are in the recruitment process for that job as, along with several other. We expect several more onboarding in early August as well as we just had some in July. The anniversary list for all my colleagues is in your packet. I'd like to point out Ms. Rosenbach, who works in our court. She's been with us for ten years. So congratulations to that milestone. Another just important piece of information is our employee self-service portal is now available online. Council should have received an email. If you have more questions on that, please feel free to contact me. That will be the availability for yourselves as well of all, all of our staff members to access their pay stubs as well as previous years W two's, just some of that payroll information. Just more on demand. We're always here to help you get that if you need it, but that's just an on demand availability that we have now. That kind of segues into IT report. That is part of the phase two of our Springbrook project. That was really kind of the first phase of phase two, if that makes sense. But we will, the other parts of that are just to increase security and then hopefully also update us to electronic time cards. So we can not pass papers around so much anymore and hopefully a little bit more of an efficient system. So HR, IT and our finance department continues to work on that together. Some infrastructure updates have been done based upon the budget that council approved, the mid-year budget. So we continue to work on cybersecurity as well as some network infrastructure upgrades. And then we also switch from Viper to Microsoft Defender. That is our email spam folder or catch, I should say. The reason we did that, it was a cost savings as well as a single source solution since we already use Microsoft. So it's just more efficient for our IT staff as well as there's cost savings involved in that. And then finally, as always, it's just the list of comkates for our IT department month over month for the last few years. So Mr. Mayor, that ends my report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. There any questions for Mr. Christian? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Christian.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda then is the mayor and administrative reports, city administrator report extended agenda. Deborah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of items for the extended agenda is council knows we are going to be canceling the August second meeting in order to allow everybody, everybody an opportunity to attend National Night Out. Looking forward then to the business meeting on August ninth. We will have a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting and looking at two items for that agenda. One is the Community Human Service Advisory Board of Member Count. And then continued updates to the council rules of procedure. For the business meeting itself, we have under consent, already planned approval of the accounts payable and ACH transactions, payroll, meeting minutes and award construction contract for the US two shared path project. A couple of final action items, we have a resolution for the ten percent petition for the North forty one annexation. And then under new business, we have the city branding contract. And then a couple of reports from the departments and that's it. Looking forward to the business meeting on August ninth.
All right. Thank you very much, Deborah. Any questions or announcements of being absent in the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the city administrator report. Deborah?
Thank you. So again, a couple of items, just to note again, that the August second meeting will be canceled for National Night Out. I did also want to bring to council's attention, as Lance had mentioned earlier in the meeting, that our plans examiner Ted Corey had attained his commercial building inspector certification. And also Tyler Christian, who's at the meeting today successfully completed his level two risk analysis and implementation of the WCIA, our Washington City's Insurance Authority Risk Management credentialing. And I believe that Tyler was the first staff member, not just at the city of Monroe, but statewide to receive that credentialing. So congratulations to Tyler. The council had asked for a fireworks update. So we wanted to share with the city council that for fireworks for twenty twenty two public works, staff spent some time doing cleanup, following fireworks. We go around with a couple of staff members and the sweeper. The cost of that cleanup is about sixty three hundred dollars. For the police department, we had minimum patrol staff, so just three staff members, officers that were on duty that evening. And then also deputy chief and chief Jolly were, were also on duty on the fourth of July. So there was no overtime for the fourth. And then a number of calls for service for police, we had nine calls for service between one PM and eleven forty five PM and July fifth, there were no calls for service. I did follow up with Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue to find out some data from the fire department as to the number of calls. And I wasn't able to receive anything back. They currently don't have a data, data analyst on duty. And the person assigned didn't get back to me before the council meeting this evening. So if that information comes available, I will follow up in a future city administrators report.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Deborah? All right. Oh, I was looking at the other screen. All right. Council member gamble, then council member Kenny, and then council member Scarborough, if you'd hit your microphone. Council member gamble, go ahead.
So Greg, question from, for finance, because I know selling of fireworks in the city of Monroe, we get sales tax off of that. Do you know what was that we bring in from just this, the fireworks sales?
I don't. I can look in the reports to be received, but I'm not sure if we would have to go by the category. So so we would have the category of retailing that would be included in there. We could
I'm asking because I kind of know the answer because this has come up before in eleven years or whatever I've been here. But anytime, you know, the, the cleanup, including staff and equipment, that it basically is offset or more, the other word, the way from the, the money that is brought in proceeds from the sales that are, that are in. So that's one thing I just want to, as a data point for everyone. And then the other thing I would just, I would add in there is there were two high school with the bond not passing. There is shortfalls across the, but you know, budgets across for the, for the high school. And because of fireworks sales, they were able to raise significant amounts. Kids were involved and parents were volunteering to sell fireworks. And they took a significant part of the proceeds in order to help fund some of the stuff that's not covered because the bond didn't last. So just another data point to, to add in there on the fireworks conversation. Thanks.
Thank you very much, council member gamble. Council member Kenny, go ahead.
I just had a question for Deborah. She may not know the answer, but I was just curious on these calls. We got nine calls between one PM and roughly midnight. Were they calls about noise complaints or, you know, issues with property damage? Just curious what the nature of those calls were.
I am looking to see if I have specific information for the types of calls. And it doesn't look like what I have available to me immediately breaks it out by types of calls. So I'm sure that information is available. I just don't happen to have it handy.
No problem. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. Council member Scarborough, go ahead.
Also on the calls, you refer to only the fourth of July. I'd like to know from the police department on the calls on the second and the third, if they had calls on those days.
Okay.
I do show calls for service for July first, second and third. I don't know if, if there's anybody else from the police department available to answer that question. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer.
I don't see anybody online right now.
Okay, so July first, they received two calls for service. July second was five calls. July third was eleven. July fourth was nine. Nothing for the fifth or the sixth and the seventh had a total of one call. So if you're, if you're looking for a total, I could also provide that. So going back to twenty seventeen total calls for service, fourteen calls in twenty seventeen. It went up to twenty six calls in twenty eighteen, twenty one calls in twenty nineteen, nineteen calls in twenty twenty, thirty calls in twenty twenty one and twenty eight calls in twenty twenty two.
And there was one year that we had somebody lose their house because of fireworks, correct?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
Okay. And my concern and to what's said, I don't, I don't disagree with the patriotism of having fireworks. What angers me is that not only does my animal have to cower in the closet on the fourth, she has to cower in the closet on the third, on the second and on the first and sometimes on the fifth. And that's, and those are the people that I speak to when I speak of my dislike for the fireworks. I also understand that some people with PTSD, it bothers them. It doesn't bother me, but it bothers them. And I have, again, I don't want to stop fireworks on the fourth. I'd like to try and have some sort of I don't know, education system for the inconsiderate people that think it's necessary to fire them off three, four, five days ahead of time. And every time the Seahawks win. So that's, that's my concern with the, the whole fireworks thing. I, I don't really want to stop it for the patriotism involved on the fourth. But it's the other days that people don't seem to care about everybody else's feelings and the cleanup. I mean, I can go through my neighborhood and go knock on the door and find oh, I'll be out to pick it up a little, in a little bit, you know, and it's all over the neighborhood. And it's, it's my concern and I see it in the Frylands when I drive down there after the fourths and so those are my concerns.
Thank you, council member Scarborough. Council member gamble, go ahead.
So just one other point too, because I know in past conversations we've had on this, we've actually pulled data to see the call volume for neighboring cities, towns that have banned fireworks. And we could produce that again, that might be beneficial for some because the, actually the call volumes in those areas are ten X. The calls that we, that, that we get because we have legalized. So just for that, that point. Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things. It's, you know, to your, to your point, council member Scarborough, it's like you can't, we can't legislate responsibility, you know, that, that piece of, piece of it, you know, that side of it. So I always, you know, I personally don't light fireworks up. I, you know, I don't, I think it's like lighting a twenty dollar bill on fire. I've said this before. I know. You know, and I go watch a professional, you know, the show on the, on the east side, but I just have a hard time, you know, making those that, I know there's a lot of people and a lot in my own neighborhood that they look forward to it every year. There's a lot of nonprofits within our area that rely on it for their revenue streams. And it's almost on a yearly basis, looking at calls, talking with the fire chief, talking with the police chief, two different chiefs now. And I just don't see anything data as of yet to, to move me off why we would make those that are doing it legally and with responsibility to pay for the, you know, the couple yahoos that are probably going to do it anyway, even if you ban it. And, and then we're going to end up spending more money on response calls associated to that. Well, right now I'm going to place a bet that we're either close to even or we make more because we actually have proceeds from sales, from the sales tax to offset any cleaning that's associated to that point as well. So that's I really do appreciate the fact that we every year kind of take a look at this. It's not something that we stick our heads to the ground on. Now we continually, yes, we did lose a home several years ago. What I can't remember is whether it was a legal firework or not. And that's, you know, that's the other thing. So that equation, a lot of those are, yep.
Thank you. Council member Kenny, go ahead.
Wanted to respond to council member Scarborough's comments, totally in support of what he said and also concur with what council member gamble has to say. I also enjoy the patriotic freedom of folks being able to do this, but I would ask, based on the, the information that Ms. Knight presented tonight about the calls that we get and also Mr. Scarborough's reports of the first of July through the fourth of July, there is a lot of activity going on. I live in the Frylands and it is like a war zone. It's very noisy and the animals do suffer. A lot of veterans suffer and I would just ask the city staff and perhaps police as well to consider this discussion in expanded view of the fourth of July, not just July fourth. But this is leading, this is four days prior to July fourth that this activity is going on and we've got the stats to prove that. All these calls that come in, the noise that goes on, the people setting them off. Do we need to tighten up our rules and regs about when these are set off? Tighten it so that this isn't happening for a full week of people just doing what they want to do unregulated. And that is maybe something that would help. And we know that this is not just the fourth of July, but days leading up to it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So one of the things is that I know Deborah is taking down requests for additional information. What I would propose is that we hear what other additional information that the council members would like. And we can go ahead and bring this back at a later agenda, either the ninth of August or the sixteenth. Like that you'll have an opportunity to review the material in advance of that. I'm going to go, council member Scarborough and then council member gamble, council member. I'm going to go, Councilmember Scarborough, and then Councilmember Gamble. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I just wanted to say it probably didn't help anything that the Fourth of July was on a Monday. And then everybody wanted to go to the races on Saturday, something on Sunday, and then something the fourth actually on Monday. So I'm sure that contributed to some of the the pre-Fourth of July fireworks. But my my comments still stand.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
I just want to remind everybody, fourth fireworks are not legal during the buildup. We already, we have a set timeframe at the fourth. I'm correct with that.
That's correct.
Yeah. So I mean, that's that's part of my point in this conversation. I mean, for me, I, based off all the data points that we currently have, I don't need to see it again. I mean, I get it if we want to bring it back, but it's already illegal before the fourth. So to me, that just illustrates more the point that, okay, so if you make it illegal on the fourth, all you're doing is eliminating revenue and taking away from, you know, individuals personally. But it's all good.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hanford. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I I don't really have any interest to to see any more data. To Councilmember Gamble's point, we've we've reviewed this every year for years. And all the data continues to point to, you know, there's not really a reason for us to outlaw or change our rules. It is illegal every other day leading up to the fourth. It's only legal on the fourth. So even if we outlawed it and said, we're going to ban fireworks on the fourth or period, there's there's still people that, and that was in the data that we saw previously over the last several years, is that other jurisdictions that have banned it, they still have fireworks going off at all hours and at all times during the the days leading up to the fourth, even when it's banned. So that's, I'm not really interested in in reviewing this this again unless, you know, there's a need to. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Just for clarification, I am not recommending a ban on fireworks on the Fourth of July. And I am aware that we do have a law in place that restricts them within certain hours on the Fourth of July. I understand all of that, and that is not my position to repeal the legalization of fireworks on the Fourth of July in Monroe. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So Deborah is going to go ahead and pull together the information that the council members requested this evening. The we can go ahead and send that to you on the ninth of August. During her city administrator's report, we can go ahead and reference that. If the council would like us to bring that back for more discussion, we can certainly do that as a separate agenda item. Does anybody have any objection to that? And I don't hear any objection. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
No objection. I'm sorry, I forgot one more thing I was going to say. I I like the idea of maybe we could, as the city, leading up to the fourth this next year on social media and posts, maybe we can do a more thorough job of explaining that they're only allowed on the fourth, let's keep fireworks legal, you know, by waiting till the fourth or something like that to encourage our citizens to to wait. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, Deborah and staff have already spoken with me about ways to do better education effort for next year, including having flyers made available to the to the vendors that are selling the fireworks so that there's a flyer there when you buy the fireworks that indicates, you know, what's allowed, what's not allowed, and what the hours and days are. And part of that that has been discussed is very similar to what you've discussed, which is doing some sort of educational component in June as we're working up to July fourth about, you know, what you can and can't do and what the days and times are. So if you've got other thoughts on that, and I look at the rest of the council as well, go ahead and email me, and we'll share it with staff. And we can certainly improve the education component for next year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. And I'll say also, just as a reminder, it's not just July fourth, but it's also January, I'm sorry, December thirty-first. Or maybe it's midnight January first. I forget which, but New Year's Eve also is a time that the council authorizes this. So it's not just July fourth. It's also then, and we'll make certain that that improved or enhanced educational component is part of working up to New Year's as well. All right. So there being no objection, my understanding is we'll, staff will go ahead and put together additional information. We'll send it out to you in advance of the August ninth meeting. We'll reference that during the city administrator's report, and at that point in time, if you'd like to bring it back, we can do that. My interest is that if the council really wants to entertain a more robust discussion, I think that having it down as a business item would be an appropriate place for it. So those are my thoughts there. If if you're comfortable with the information you get and that you received tonight, we don't need to put it on a future agenda if that's what council would like to do. All right. Thank you, everybody. Debbie, do you have anything further?
I don't, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So Mayor's report had a number of things that I did last week, including interviewing people for planning commission appointment vacancies. Also participated in another couple of interviews around the branding process. We have a follow-up interview with somebody, I think, tomorrow on the branding process. Also, as part of the the kickoff meeting for the comprehensive plan. And I'm very happy with the group that we have so far. The staff did a really great job of having representation across many departments, everybody from finance to community development to public works. I I think PD might have been there as well, as well as mayor and city administrator. So I I, you know, it's important that we engage all the different departments in this process, and I appreciated that. I think that's all that I have to report for this evening. And unless anybody has any questions for me, I don't see anybody asking any questions. We are going to move on to an executive session. We do have a need for an executive session this evening. This is an executive session for pricing of property, person to R C W forty-two point thirty point one ten, subsection one, subsection little C, and potential litigation person to R C W forty-two point thirty point one ten, subsection one, subsection little I for an initial ten minutes. I will be announcing extensions to our clerk, who will then advise this current meeting of those extensions. There there will be action to follow following the executive session, if nothing else, to adjourn for the evening. So we are now in executive session for an initial ten minutes beginning at seven fifty-seven P M. Thank you. All right, we are back out of executive session, and I turn to council. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I move to add an action item to tonight's agenda concerning the approval of a resolution authorizing the sale of certain real property to Forza Development LLC.
The motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Gamble for a requested action that's showing on the screen right now to add an item to tonight's agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Councilmember Kenny?
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Monroe, Washington, declaring a surplus to the city's needs and authorizing the sale of certain real property to Forza Development LLC.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Gamble for a requested action that is currently showing on the screen to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Monroe regarding the surplus of property. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, everybody. There's no further business this evening unless, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Sorry, I couldn't get my hand up in time before the the vote, but I just wanted to say that I really think this is great for our city and pursues exactly what we've talked about in the past and what we're looking and envisioning for that area. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments on the motion that was just taken? All right, seeing none, there's no further business this evening. There being no objection, we are adjourned. There's no objection. Have a great week. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.